Good evening. I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield City Council. It is January 23rd and at 7:00 PM. If you're able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we're going to do the open forum. So, thank you for attending tonight's meeting. A few reminders about open forum. If you wish to call in, you can do so by dialing 1-415-655-0001, and the meeting ID is 2630-078-8926, and the password is 1234. When I call you up, please sign in and state your name and address. I'll begin timing after that, and you'll have five minutes, or, excuse me, you'll have three minutes. We're all neighbors here and want to provide a safe environment to state our opinions about municipal policies, so please stick to issues. This is not a forum to discuss individuals. The council will be listening and taking notes, but will not be responding to your comments at this time. This open forum is designed to hear you, to hear from you, and not to be a debate. Thank you. So, is there anyone online that has called in?
Mayor and council, there's nobody online currently.
All right, I have two cards from people in the room, and so first we'll have Larry Earnster.
Tessie, there we go. Okay. Thank you, Chris. My name is Larry Earnster. I live at 6727 Elliott Avenue South. In 2023, there were 8,000 homeless in Minnesota, a 6% increase over 2022. There's also a housing shortage, a shortage of 50,000 homes in Minnesota. Right now, there is legislation in the Minnesota House of Representatives that proposes Minnesota be made a sanctuary state for immigration enforcement purposes, and that state and local officials be restricted from cooperating with federal immigration enforcement efforts. My questions are, we have, have we solved the housing shortage? Have we solved homelessness? Do we have unallocated resources? If we do, why are those resources not being offered to those already here and freezing in our streets? Before you volunteer to become a sanctuary city, here's a quick review of some of the challenges cities have incurred. Last year, New York, a $2 billion state fund paying unemployment and stimulus benefits to migrants was exhausted in just three months. Last year, a special committee found the taxpayers in Tennessee spend an extra $3.9 million per year to educate unaccompanied children. Florida claims the state was paying $2 billion per year to provide health care and education for nearly 800,000 illegals. Last year, Philadelphia elected to budget $500,000 to publicly fund immigration attorneys. So, let me summarize. We have a housing crisis. We have people living in the street. We have poor, we have laws. Yet, the City Council of Richfield wants to support legislation that would tell the police to ignore federal laws and advertise to the world that Minnesota is the place for illegal and undocumented migrants to come. Minnesota is already listed as the fifth most popular destination for migrants. A disturbing aspect of your enthusiasm to achieve sanctuary city status is that there has been no outreach to the citizens of Richfield, no publication or communication of your intentions, and no interest in what your citizens want. Tonight, I ask you to not support the sanctuary state legislation and to not change Richfield's legislative priorities until you solve our existing problems and until you have a plan to pay for more migrants that is developed in cooperation with and with the consensus of the citizens of Richfield. Remember, the proposed legislation prevents the police from acting rather than allowing them to make on-the-ground, case-by-case decisions like they do today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Melissa Melnick Gonzalez.
Good evening to the council members, to the mayor, and to those present. My name is Melissa Melnick Gonzalez. I am pastor of Tapestry at church located at 7045 Lindale Avenue South here in Richfield. I've heard what the gentleman said, and a lot of those concerns I agree with. We have housing issues that we need to address. We have food insecurity. We have all kinds of issues that we really do need to address that are not being addressed, not necessarily just in Richfield, but in our state and in our country. I am very much in agreement with all of those concerns. At the same time, these, the issues of immigration, law enforcement, and our municipal law enforcement are not directly tied to those. And I approach this from a bit of a different angle. And this is how I'm going to say how, that I support this. I don't know what you call it. I'm, sorry, I'm a little nervous up here. In 2017, some of you know that my son died. And in 2018, I rode my bike from here to the Mississippi, or to the Gulf of Mexico along the Mississippi in his memory. In 2018, while I was riding, I was right on the border of Arkansas and Louisiana. And I remember thinking that there were so many people following me on my journey and supporting me. And the reason for that was because they could see the love that I had and still have for my son. The only thing that sustained me in that journey was the love that I have for my son and my faith. And I wondered at the time, in a post that I put on Facebook, why is it that people can have so much compassion for me and not have that same compassion for the mothers and the fathers and the kids and the individuals who've had to be uprooted from their own homes and their own countries for so many reasons, to experience violence that we can't even fathom here, to experience hunger and, and just loss, no access to medical care, no access to housing. You may or may not agree with the reasons people come to be in this country, but I can tell you, as I work with immigrants from around that in America, that they are excited, feel blessed and love this country already. They are proud to be here in the United States. They want to contribute. They want to be active members of this society. They want to be loved, and they want people to see them as human beings. So, as this city council makes a decision tonight on this, somebody help me with the word, but you know what I'm talking about. I ask you to look at this with compassion, with seeing the other person as human beings who are, who deserve dignity, human dignity. And however we can contribute that in this city, I support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for open forum? All right, we'll see if anybody pops up online, and I'll hand these off to the...
Say, Mayor and council, we do have, oop, they disappeared.
Oh, there is somebody there.
There was somebody online, and they have logged off. So, it looks like we have nobody calling in for the open forum.
Did anyone send any written testimony in? I know we almost forgot that last meeting, so. All right, so it looks like we have, everyone who's wished to speak has spoken. So, we're going to end open forum and move on to the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of January 9th, 2024, the city council meeting of January 9th, 2024, and the special city council meeting of January 12th, 2024.
I'd move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or corrections? All right, all in favor of approving those three sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we've approved all three sets. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
I'd move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved the agenda. Next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider the approval of the foundational public health responsibilities grant provided by the Minnesota Legislature and administered through the Minnesota Department of Health. Item B, consider adoption of resolutions of support for two grant opportunities offered through MinDOT's Safe Routes to School program. Number one, an infrastructure grant application by Public Works for $500,000 to construct pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure on 70th Street between Elliott and 12th Avenues at Richfield STEM and Dual Language Elementary Schools. Item two, a planning grant application by Independent School District #280 for planning assistance to update the 2014 Safe Routes to School comprehensive plan. And I submit these two items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Mayor, I believe the person came back in. If we want to pause and accept a late open forum comment.
Oh, thank you. Is there someone that wanted to speak for open forum?
Call-in user with area code 612 and 869, do you wish to speak in the open forum?
We lost him again.
All right, well, we'll try. Maybe the third time will be the charm. All right, well, while we're waiting on that, is there a motion for the consent calendar?
I move the consent calendar.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any comments or questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Whalen.
I just wanted to express a lot of support for item B, that if folks are curious to learn more about the Safe Routes to School program, there's a lot of good information in the full packet for tonight's agenda, but just lots of good work continuing, and particularly wanted to lift up, I know, representing the east side, that folks who live just north of the STEM and Dual Language schools reach out fairly often about their concerns and ideas to keep improving that. And I see that that is a key focus of the ongoing efforts, and so I'm excited to see what comes of that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I just want to also do a shout out to the, of the city and the school district working together on this Safe Routes to School. And I know councilmember Heford O'Leary has been representing the council on this, but also the staff from both the school district and the city have been working together on this. And so I think it's a really great example of partnership, and I appreciate all of that work. So, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we've approved the consent calendar. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to agenda item four, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to consider the appointment of a youth member to the Sustainability Commission. City Advisory Commission terms for youth members are for one year and expire August 31st of each year. The city manager's office conducts recruitment seeking applicants to fill the youth vacancies each year. This recruitment includes information on the city's website, Facebook page, and communication with the local high schools. The recommended action is to approve the appointment of Helen Burke to the Sustainability Commission as a youth commissioner.
All right, and so are you moving that?
Yes, I am moving to approve this.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any comment, question, or discussion? I'll say welcome to Helen. It's great to have another youth commissioner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we have now approved the appointment. Thank you. Next, excuse me, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Heford O'Leary for item five.
Thank you. This will be considering approval and adoption of the Active Transportation Action Plan for the city of Richfield. In August 22, Richfield was awarded a MinDOT grant to develop an active transportation plan for public infrastructure in the city. Over the past 18 months, staff from MinDOT, their consultants, and a committee, including representatives from Public Works, Community Development, Public Safety, Public Health, City Council, Richfield Public Schools, and the community, has led to public engagement and plan development effort to create the Active Transportation Action Plan for the city. It's the second I'm going to turn this over to our transportation engineer, who's going to give a presentation. But before I do so, I just want to say it's been a pleasure to serve on that committee and to hear the feedback the Transportation Commission was able to give, and to personally give myself credit for demonstrating slipping and sliding on a bike on page 34. So, if you want to see me failing to use it, go to that page. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Hartiger.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Matt Hartiger. I'm the transportation engineer for the city. I'm just going to give a quick overview of how the plan came to be, the development of it, and then provide opportunity for any discussion that needs to occur. So, as Councilmember Heford O'Leary alluded to during the intro to this, this plan was funded through a active transportation grant through a Minnesota Department of Transportation program. Planning began in the fall of 2022, and incorporate, or was, the committee was comprised of all of the partners that you see on the screen, several city partners, as well as county, public school, public health, and a few other groups as well. One of the biggest things that we wanted to do as part of this was go out into the community to make sure that we were addressing the needs of the residents of Richfield by identifying the current conditions, what the desired network of active transportation would look like in the city, and then what action items there were to get to that point. Those activities included an online interactive map, winter biking and walking workshop, which was what Councilmember Heford O'Leary was talking about, where the slipping and sliding occurred on some icy roads in February. We went to the Richfield High School Eco Fair, which is the map shown at the top of the screen. And then also, we used information from the Richfield Public School District Safe Routes to School Survey, which they conduct every year for parents and families who attend the school district. There were several major concerns identified. The biggest ones were vehicle speeds and yielding, crossing safety and comfort, Penn Avenue safety as a whole, nonvehicular access across 35W, desire for connected routes to and through the park system in Richfield, safe routes to school, and then traffic calming on neighborhood streets. The highlighted goals of this plan are to increase the walking, biking, and transit mode share through making it safer and easier for residents to use active modes of transportation year-round, and then to create infrastructure that is vibrant, neighborhood-oriented, innovative, equitable, and resilient. This is probably kind of hard to see, but what the engagement did lead to was this priority network map, which the routes that are highlighted on here are routes that have been identified as future potential neighborhood routes or arterial routes to focus active transportation infrastructure investments in to create a more cohesive network across the city. Those changes could include anything, or those changes are identified in the plan as potential, there's a toolbox of potential items. Those will be worked through with any individual project that would come up as part of this plan. Short term, the short-term projects that were identified through this plan were a speed limit reduction, which the city council has already taken action on in December, reviewing and revising guiding policies and plan documents that the Public Works Department uses as a whole for infrastructure development, centering active transportation users in the Nicolet Avenue redesign and in all road design that occurs in the city, and then also developing a neighborhood traffic management plan, which would help lead to some of those neighborhood routes that were identified on the previous page. Long term, the goals would be to improve active transportation on new construction projects, such as a future funding by the county of a Penn Avenue reconstruction, 69th Street reconstruction, 76th and 77th Street, and other projects that are identified in our capital improvement program, identifying that neighbor, or implementing that neighborhood greenway network that was shown on the map, working with MinDOT to address active transportation barriers created by the highways, similar to how the 494 project is incorporating several multimodal bridge improvements over the next few years, and redesigning residential roadways with a lower target speed when those are ready to be reconstructed as well. It's a very quick overview of a year-and-a-half-long planning process. So, thank you.
All right, did staff have anything else you want to add to that? Thank you so much for that. It was a really great report, and I would encourage people to look at the agenda and read the full packet that you guys gave, but thank you also for that presentation. Do we have a motion?
Let me look at the language. I move that we approve and adopt the Active Transportation Action Plan for the city of Richfield.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further questions, comments, Councilmember Heford O'Leary?
Just to give a couple more comments on the plan and a little bit of the Transportation Commission discussion. I think one point that was raised that I want to share with the council is, you know, we have a number of these plans. Over the years, they had a bike, bike plan. We have a pedestrian plan from four years ago or so. So, the question was, when we have these plans, when will we go and do it? And it was, it was a question I didn't have a great answer to. And I do want to mention, you know, I think this, this plan does an excellent job of talking about the places we've had successes on Lindale Avenue and 66th Street. But it also identifies a lot of, a lot of problems that we don't have funding. We don't have staff capacity. There's so many things we have to do, and I think it's important that we look through it and we consider what we can do. And I would say particularly like the neighborhood greenway effort, staff does such an excellent job. It's like half their job is being fundraisers. They do an excellent job getting grants and so on. But the reality is, to achieve what is necessary in this, we need a more concerted planning effort, and we need significantly more, more financial resources allocated to this to be able to actually build and actually start to change those streets. So, just something for us to keep in mind in our next budget cycles and as we continue to prioritize this. We can't achieve this just for waiting for the next CIP project that's already on the schedule. The other one I will specifically call out that I was glad to see and encouraged in the plan was just acknowledgement that our standard-sized street design doesn't really serve us very well with the wide, wide roadway shared with cars that still has a high speed. So, I appreciate that being named, and I appreciate, including the graphic, just showing some of the things that go well and some of the things that need improvement on those streets.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I did want to point out that the Senate Bonding Committee joined us on Nicolet Avenue, and that's one of the things that's mentioned in here, and the active planning on that. And thank you to everybody that was part of that process too, because I think there's something very concrete about walking down that sidewalk with no buffer between the cars whipping past you that gets people's attention about why you need to have a safer, safer route. So, thank you to everybody for that as well. All right, any other comments? Councilmember Troutman.
I just want to say a thank you as, as someone who's raising the fourth generation of Richfielders here in our city, the progress of what our roads look like and what it is. And I was, I was, I'm old enough to have been raised as a free-range kid in Richfield with no limitations or, you know, just to bike everywhere in the city, and it's so much safer. It's so much better now. And I appreciate, even as mentioned in the Equity Work Session, you know, there are, one of the places where we talk about structural inequities, how, how we build our roads are the definition of structural tools that either are, are fair and safe and serve everybody or don't serve everybody well. And so, I just, I just want to recognize everybody's leadership, and especially you, Director Asher, in thought leadership and focusing on this. And even though we have long distances to go, I just want to say I am really grateful to be in this city and enjoy every time I walk down a road that's better than it was a generation ago. I just feel really grateful. So, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, we have the motion before us to adopt the Active Transportation Plan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've adopted the plan. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item six. Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The item six is to consider amending the city's 2024 legislative platform to include the North Star bill. The North Star bill, or the bill for the rest of this, is a state legislative act which separates Minnesota government resources from civil and immigration enforcement. The bill takes the constitutional position that immigration enforcement is a federal matter, and state and local resources should be focused on their own responsibilities. By doing so, local governments can build trust with all residents and remove barriers to access local services. These values are discussed in the bill's preamble. At the December 12th, 2023 work session, a council member suggested including support for the bill in the city's 2024 legislative platform. Given the short turnaround time, the 2024 legislative platform, to get it adopted before the legislative breakfast, council directed staff to review the bill and schedule a final discussion at the next possible work session. Staff has since had time to read the bill, as well as meeting with supporters of the proposed law. Staff is comfortable adding support for the bill to the platform. However, there are concerns with some of the details of the language and believe this legislation will have a better chance of success if the authors and supporters work with the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association, the League of Minnesota Cities, and other organizations early in the legislative process. Staff recommend the council amend our legislative platform to add the following specific language under the Public Safety section. Support for the goals of the North Star Act, which clearly separates all Minnesota government resources from civil immigration enforcement as it is a federal responsibility. This clarity helps build trust with Richfield's immigrant community and removes barriers to provide important public safety, public health, and other services. We encourage the bill's authors and supporters to work with the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association, Minnesota Sheriff's Association, Minnesota Police and Peace Officers Association, League of Minnesota Cities, and Metro Cities on the specific language. And there are, again, if you look at the full packet, there's some supporting documents that were provided by the North Star Alliance, the groups that are supporting the bill. Does staff have anything else to add? We had just discussed this in the work session too. If people have an interest in going to watch that recording once it's available. Then I would move to amend our 2024 legislative platform to include the previously read addition to the platform under Public Safety.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I will just add the commentary. I'm excited that our, to have the commenters weighing in on this. I also agree that we, I mean, I've talked a lot. We've got a housing crisis. I'm excited for the continued conversation about how we build 50,000 more housing units or more to address that crisis. And no human being is illegal, and we're glad you're here. And I'm sorry that we're only the fifth most welcoming place so far. But we appreciate that you're coming and will help us solve big problems like our...
we appreciate that you're coming and will help us solve big problems like our housing crisis, will contribute your taxes to solving our issues and your ideas. You make our community a better place. So I'm excited to be supporting this to make it more clear that you can access, you can report a crime done to yourself or that you've witnessed, you can access the resources that you need at our city hall without fear that that is going to send you back to a country where you are not welcome or in danger. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
All right, are there any other comments or questions? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to thank again our chief of police and our city manager and other, other staff. I, I thank you, but by thanking you, I'm also thanking other team members that have taken time to, to consider this, which is not necessarily a departure from anything that we're doing as a city, but it is an opportunity to the extent that people watch our, you know, what we're doing, and opportunities for community leaders like, like Pastor Melissa to share with community that as, as a city, this is a space for all of our residents. And I, you know, I appreciate even the comments today identifying common challenges, and part of the reason that work like this is so important is because all of our residents are invested in solving those problems. I think there's, there's no, there's no way we're going to solve our housing problem and simultaneously eliminate people who are coming from out of the state to work on those problems. So we are, we would be in recession overnight if we lost all the residents that have different statuses or mixed-status families. And so I just, and I think there's probably also a bipartisan consensus that the federal immigration system is non-functioning, and that's not something that we try to solve here in the city. And so this is not, this is not something that we're, we're advocating for, at least for me personally, to solve problems we have no tools to solve. I really appreciate our city's leadership to all our residents, and I think it will serve our residents better if we can serve our state, or if our state can give consistent guidance to all cities, and not just cities, but counties and multiple levels of government to the Metropolitan Council, and when you start to drill down to how, how everything works together, clarity would be really helpful for, for our residents. And then the last thing, I would, I would say is, this is, this is not an invitation to break any law. That also is, this is really important. As a lawyer, I take that really, really seriously, and it's not that there's never a place for civil disobedience, but this is not civil disobedience. This is an opportunity to clarify the law and create some good policy, and I would invite my colleagues to support it and thank our staff for considering it.
All right, are there other comments or questions? All right, I would like to say that I appreciate that we put in here that we are encouraging the bill's authors to work with the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association, the Sheriff's Association, the Police and Peace Officers Association, and the League of Cities, because I know in the legislative process, things, they always refer to it as sausage-making because so much changes and, but I think it's important for everybody to work together so we get the best possible bill, because we want something practical that's going to work so people feel safe and they feel that it's okay to be in contact with our public safety officials and be able to report crimes and report if they've been victimized, because that makes everybody safer. And so I think working together and coming up with the best possible language is the way to go, so I appreciate that that's in here. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, so the motion before us is to amend the legislative platform. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we have passed the motion. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Item Number Seven, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. At last council meeting's open forum, there were several residents here representing Richfield for Equitable Public Safety, and they are advocating for eliminating traffic stops, and the goal would be to, trap, I'm sorry, traffic stops for low-level violations with the goal of helping to close racial gaps in public safety enforcement. They stated that many cities had stopped. There are a handful of cities in Ramsey County that have stopped and they've changed their policies, and one of the reasons is that the Ramsey County attorney is no longer prosecuting these lower-level traffic stops. I'm not aware of any other cities in Hunnepin County that have stopped, with the exception of Minneapolis, which had to do it because of their consent decree. We have met several times with Richfield for Equitable Public Safety. They have shared their analysis with council and with staff and the Human Rights Commission. We've shared our report with them. We've outlined progress that we've made with our equity program, and we'll continue to meet with them. Unfortunately, racial gaps in many of our systems persist. We just had a work session, and we had an independent organization, the Center for Economic Inclusion, do an assessment of our equity program. Our overall score was low, so there is definitely progress to be made, but most cities in our category actually scored lower than we did. One of the highlights actually that they found is that the most progress that we've made in the categories that they called out was public safety. So, and then another resident questioned the process to develop the legislative platform, and that was summarized later in the meeting as part of approving the platform, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I'm just to clarify on the traffic stop question, and if you don't have the answer ready, that's understandable, but the term low level seems a little bit ambiguous. I think that was the, the term that was used by the testifiers, but of the cities that have stopped doing it, is that, what does low level mean? Does that mean just equipment violations, or does that mean like speeding tickets?
I would have to verify what the details of their policies are. I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, then we'll move on to claims and payroll.
I would move claims and payroll.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Are any questions or discussion? All right, all in favor of approving claims and payroll, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved the claims and payroll. Next, we'll move on to the hats off to hometown hits, and we'll start off with Councilmember Whalen.
I was going to name the legislators that came to visit to tour, walk a bit of Nicolet Avenue and hear our case for why we think the bonding dollars to help support that project are so essential, and so thank you to them. It's always good to meet with our state legislators, and thank you to staff who had put that together in our, on a particularly cold morning, but it was a, a good conversation, and we look forward to more.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, I'd like to give a hats off to the, the city staff here who diligently put out a email summary of what happens in the city. It keeps everybody up to date and what's going on, what has been going on, and what is coming up in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I just wanted to take my hat off for Jeff Manicon, who's the owner of Soda Boys Smoke Shop, resident, or resident who was previously a transportation commissioner and is a customer of his, suggested we talk. As of course we all know, we passed rule changes about tobacco sales and flavored tobacco, and I completely believe in the changes that we made, but it was helpful still to talk with the business owner and understand that something can be a great policy and, and still have impacts on that business. So I'm just grateful for him for spending an hour with me and just talking about how that was for him as a small business owner, and also had some ideas about THC rules, which we have yet to discuss, so I just appreciated his time, and it's always great to talk with a small business owner.
All right, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I would just got a note this afternoon that our, our former mayor, Marty Kirch, is, is doing poorly, and so for those, those of you that have been in Richfield, he's, he's been a mayor a long time. He's the one that has the statue of Lyndale in sixty-six, and he's usually right in the back row there. And so I just want to say, Mayor, we hope you, we wish you all the best, hope you're feeling better, and sorry you're, you're doing poorly. And, and then I also was just hearing from our mayor about the Richfield Optimists Club and what they do, and I confess, I had no idea what they did, and every, every year they put a flag in, in my, in my front yard and for Fourth of July and Memorial Day, and they actually raise thousands of dollars through that, and they donate to local charities and say, say affirming things and sing affirming songs. So I didn't know what they were. They sound like an incredible group, and I now know who I can thank for, for the flag in my yard, so thank you, Richfield Optimists.
And it's just so happens that city manager Rodriguez and I tomorrow are going to be joining the Optimists and talking to them about our update on what's going on in the city, so we will send your well wishes to them.
Please do, and I imagine it'd be hard to have a frown on your face when you leave that, that group.
Oh, it's a very amazing group. All right, and I want to do a hats off to Partnership Academy. So, third-grade teachers Matt Olson, Miriam Zaffarino, and Whitney Strand invited several of us to come for their changemakers unit. They had been studying people throughout history who had made changes in their community, and so they had Rosa Herrera, who is a founder of Partnership Academy, Judge Juan Hoyos, who is on the Hunnepin County bench, myself, and Cleber Ortiz, who is a professor of education, and we went and talked to the third graders, and the third graders had a lot of really amazing questions. So here's the picture, it's like three, two or three classrooms worth of kids, so it's about sixty kids, but I was so impressed with the quality of the questions that they came up with, because they had like three or four like pre-arranged ones, and then they just started popcorn-ing, and it was very thoughtful listening to what they had to say. And then the last hats off I have, city manager Rodriguez and I are on the Southwest Suburban Cable Commission, and they talk about some of the public access programming that goes on there, and we found out at the last meeting that Richfield's own Patty Piatz has for the second year in a row received an award. She got, her show got the Hometown Media Award. It's called the Republican Roundtable, and so that was pretty nifty that they got that two years in a row, so hats off to Patty and her whole team on their program. So with that, I would like to wish you all a good evening. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we stand adjourned.